Bonjour mesdames et messieurs. On va commencer la réunion d'aujourd'hui.
Nous allons commencer la réunion dans une minute.
Dans une minute. Merci. Bonjour, bonnes tardes, mesdames et messieurs. Bonjour à tous les membres du Conseil municipal pour le 4 novembre. Bienvenue à la réunion du Conseil municipal pour le 4 novembre. C'est la table du budget municipal. Je suppose que plus de gens verront CNN à ce moment-là que Rogers Community 22, mais nous sommes tous prêts à tabler un budget pour les citoyens d'Oréval. S'il vous plaît, restez un instant de réflexion personnelle. Très bien. Merci beaucoup, M. Melcey. Un peu de rappel pour la réunion d'aujourd'hui. Si les membres du conseil et des membres de la staff pourraient rester en mute à tout moment jusqu'à ce qu'ils soient appelés à parler. Si les membres du conseil veulent parler d'un élément, utilisez la fonction de souligner. Cette réunion sera broadcast sur la TV Rogers. Les membres et les staff sont demandés de positionner leurs caméras afin que leurs visages soient centrés le plus près au sommet du cadre possible. Et les téléphones et les participants, s'il vous plaît, ne mettez pas votre téléphone en pause. Déclaration d'intérêt, Déclaration des conflits d'intérêt. Je vais juste déplacer le schéma ici un instant. Regret. Nous n'avons pas reçu de regrets. Et maintenant, la table du budget. Bonjour à tous. Bonjour tout le monde.
Mr. Mayor, vous avez peut-être oublié le rôle de parole ce matin?
Oh, désolé. Oui, merci. Bon point. Je vous vois tous là. Nous ferons le rôle de parole pour formaliser ça. Madame députée clerk.
Conseiller Lou Lauf.
Présent.
Conseiller Dudas.
Ici.
Conseiller Harder.
Ici.
Conseiller Suds.
Ici.
Conseiller El Shantiri.
Present.
Conseiller Gower.
Present.
Conseiller Kavanaugh.
Present.
Conseiller Shirelli. Conseiller Egley.
Ici.
Conseiller Deans.
Ici.
Conseiller Tierney.
Present.
Conseiller Fleury.
Bonjour.
Conseiller King.
Ici.
Conseiller McKenney.
Present.
Conseiller Leeper.
Ici.
Conseiller Brockington.
Bonjour.
Conseiller Menard.
Bonjour.
Conseiller Cutie.
Ici.
Conseiller Kits.
Ici.
Conseiller Drews.
Ici.
Conseiller Moffett.
Ici.
Conseiller Meehan.
Present.
Conseiller Hubley.
Ici.
Mayor Watson.
Ici.
Vous avez un courum, Mr. Mayor.
Merci. Et merci Eli. Bonjour à tous. Bonjour tout le monde. Aujourd'hui, nous tablons le budget 2021 pour l'entrée publique. Le budget municipal d'orée 3e de ce mandat du Conseil. Aujourd'hui, nous présentons le budget 2021. Le budget de cette année est développé sous des circonstances extraordinaires. COVID-19 a profondément changé notre réalité fiscale et injecté un haut niveau d'incertitude dans notre processus de budgétation. Le processus de budgétation miroir dans de nombreux sens l'incertitude économique et sociale que nos résidents ont rencontré depuis le début de la pandémie. Et nous entrons dans le processus de budgétation très attentifs au impact dévastateur que la pandémie a eu sur les niveaux d'emploi et la santé de nombreux de nos citoyens. Je crois que le City of Ottawa doit s'efforcer de protéger notre ville et ses résidents contre l'incertitude et l'insecurity qui vient avec COVID-19.
Je comprends.
Il y en a certains qui veulent que nous réduisons nos investissements dans le progrès et les programmes et les services. D'autres veulent que nous réduisons notre travail municipal permanent pendant la pandémie. Si nous vivons dans des temps d'accroissement économique large et de niveaux d'emploi augmentants, il pourrait être logique de considérer des réductions stratégiques de la force municipale. Mais voyons cela. Pensez-y bien. Où sont les emplois auxquels les gens pourraient s'appliquer dans cette économie paralysée? C'est important pour les membres du Conseil de savoir que chaque partie de la force municipale a été étendue pour maintenir les services sur lesquels nos résidents comptent et répondre aux ordres provinciaux. La demande des services municipaux n'a pas diminué avec COVID. En fait, elle est en fait plus élevée. Cela inclut les permets de construction, les applications de développement par la police, les volumes de call de 3-1-1 et une demande accrue pour les services sociaux. Nous observons aussi des besoins incroyables à être atteints dans nos institutions de soins à long terme. Des disruptions des services de soins de jeunesse, des increases en assistance d'emploi, des demandes paramédicales explosantes, et la liste continue. Notre force de travail n'est pas immune aux impacts dévastateurs de COVID-19. Nos employés se battent avec les mêmes problèmes que tout le monde dans notre communauté. Cela inclut la gestion des enfants à l'école, l'illégalité ou la perte de亲人的, époux, conjoncteurs qui subissent la perte d'emploi ou soutien des parents âgés en isolation. Voici juste un exemple pratique de la façon dont les membres du conseil travaillent pour maintenir les services essentiels pendant la pandémie. Le City of Ottawa a émis des permets de construction pour 3,9 milliards de dollars de construction de janvier à octobre 2020, comparé à juste 2,7 milliards au même période l'an dernier. Ce 45% d'augmentation de l'année est utile à la protection des emplois de construction et à maintenir notre économie locale pendant ces temps de pandémie difficiles. Et donc, nous continuons à avoir besoin de nos employés pour être en mesure de répondre rapidement lorsque nous nous éloignons du environnement post-pandémique. Donnons-nous un peu de temps à notre personnel plus que jamais lors de la phase post-pandémique. Je crois que le public attendra que nous soyons prêts quand cela arrive. Je veux prendre cette occasion pour remercier le Premier ministre Trudeau et le Premier Doug Ford pour reconnaître que nous avons besoin de leur soutien pour maintenir la solidarité sociale dans ces temps difficiles. Merci à Monsieur Trudeau et Monsieur Ford de leur solidarité qui rend ces moments difficiles non seulement pour les résidents d'Oréval mais pour tous les résidents de notre province et de notre pays. Et pour reconnaître que nous émergerons dans une position meilleure socialement et économiquement si nous continuons à investir dans notre peuple, dans nos résidents, dans nos petites entreprises et dans nos services municipaux clés, programmes et partenariats. Maintenant n'est pas le moment de reculer sur les investissements clés qui continueront à conduire notre prospérité et la générosité comme société dans les années à venir. Investissements dans notre peuple, dans nos routes, dans nos installations, dans nos programmes et services, dans nos transferts de paiement à des agences qui servent les plus vulnérables. Ces investissements maintiennent et soudainement améliorent notre solidarité sociale autant qu'ils soudainement améliorent nos niveaux d'emploi local. C'est pourquoi je suis fier du travail que j'ai aidé à diriger avec le city manager et tous les membres du Conseil de tabler un budget qui est prudent et équilibré. Je suis également fier d'introduire un budget qui meets le taux de impôt de 3% que j'ai proposé en 2018 et endorse par le Conseil dans chacun des trois budgets depuis lors. Le débat sur le budget est la discussion la plus importante que nous avons chaque année. Je veux aussi prendre cette occasion, tôt dans la présentation, pour remercier nos employés municipaux pour garder nos services clés en cours pendant ces temps de pandémie difficiles. Merci pour l'assurance que notre recyclage se repasse régulièrement, pour garder notre eau de boisson propre et sûre, et pour maintenir nos parcs et voies. Merci à notre staff de transport public pour faire travailler les résidents en bus et en LRT et parétransport. Merci à notre personnel de transport public de permettre à la population de se rendre au travail en toute sécurité. Et merci pour la vigilance et la compassion dans le service de nos résidents les plus vulnérables, assurant les besoins de santé, de sécurité et d'autres besoins à être atteints. Bien sûr, un très spécial remerciement à nos premiers responsables pour le travail incroyable qu'ils ont fait durant cette pandémie. Faites, police, paramedics. Sur le nom de tous les membres du Conseil municipal, je vous remercie. Je veux maintenant fournir une vue de l'ensemble des blocs de construction du budget 2021. Dans mes remarques aujourd'hui, je commencerais par indiquer où nous nous trouvons d'un point de vue budgétaire à ce moment-là, lorsque nous ferons la fin du budget 2020. Je décrirai ensuite le plan du Conseil de renforcer notre investissement dans la habitation pour nos plus vulnérables et comment nous continuons à soutenir et protéger la sécurité de notre communauté et nos résidents les plus vulnérables pendant et après la pandémie. Je fournirai aussi une vue de l'ensemble de la façon dont le budget 2021 suit la direction du Conseil pour continuer d'investir dans notre infrastructure, qui est bien sûr le bloc de construction de la réussite actuelle et future de la communauté. Je fournirai ensuite une vue de la façon dont nous soutenons nos petites entreprises et la nécessité d'un effort citoyen unifié sur ce front lorsque nous nous éloignons du nouveau an. Je parlerai aussi de la façon dont nous proposons de continuer à rendre le transit accessible pour les résidents et les contribuants d'Oréval en direction du 2021. Clairement, nous devons réconcilier l'affordabilité pour nos passagers de transit avec l'affordabilité du système de transit que le Conseil a décidé de construire au long terme. Je veux aussi fournir une vue de la façon dont le City est expandissant ses efforts pour protéger l'environnement et investir dans une résilience climatique plus importante. Nous ferons cela en soutenant des projets qui se payent pour eux-mêmes grâce à des économies au fil du temps. Veuillez commencer par discuter de où nous nous trouvons en direction du budget 2021. Le budget 2021 de l'Oréval prévoit un budget opérationnel total de 3,9 milliards de dollars et une investissement capitalisé total de 781 millions de dollars. À l'étude des détails et des highlights du document de budget, il est important que nous soyons transparents sur les hypothèses et les risques que nous mitigons dans ce budget actuel. Comme je l'ai mentionné avant, le gouvernement du Canada et la province d'Ontario ont augmenté le soutien financier aux municipalités en 2020, sans lequel nous serions en train d'écouter un exercice budget différent en ce moment. Nous avons été notifiés récemment que le City of Ottawa a reçu la deuxième fois de la fin de la fin de COVID-19. Cela inclut 74,9 millions de dollars pour le transit et 49,3 millions de dollars du flux municipal du programme de restart. Fournissements de restart, plutôt. C'est un payement très solide de 124,2 millions de dollars vers nos 181 millions de dollars en pressions financières pour 2020. Au jour de la date, cela représente 68% de nos besoins financiers liés au COVID-19. J'ai été rassuré dans mes affaires avec le Premier d'Ontario et le ministre de transport Mulroni que notre ville sera entière sur le reste de notre déficit lié au COVID-19 pour 2020. J'ai aussi parlé au Premier Ford à propos de remboursement de la santé publique du City of Ottawa qui est une contribution essentielle au combat contre le COVID-19, qui a créé une pression de 12 millions de dollars pour 2020. Il m'a assuré que la province est soutenue pour aider les unités de santé publiques à Ontario, parce que bien sûr, chaque unité de santé est presque dans la même situation que nous nous trouvons. Il m'a assuré que le gouvernement provincial veut appuyer les bureaux de santé dans toutes les provinces, non seulement ici à Oréval. Les membres sont maintenant en train de préparer la soumission de phase 2 à la province. Les projections de déficit ont été restées pour refléter des coûts plus bas et des mesures de containment de coût en cours. La présentation du budget 2021 du staff indiquera comment COVID-19 est attendu de continuer à influencer les opérations municipales. À un haut niveau, les membres prévoient un déficit de 153,5 millions de dollars liés au COVID-19 si la pandémie dure d'autres 12 mois. La publicité de l'Oréval est aussi attendue que le COVID-19 continue à avoir un impact très significatif sur leur budget. Nous attendons que le gouvernement d'Ontario continue à soutenir la ville en la bloquant à la fin de l'année, le travail essentiel qui est effectué par notre équipe dédiée à la santé publique de l'Oréval. L'OPH est estimé que le gap pour 2021, si le COVID-19 continue pendant 12 mois, pourrait être supérieur à 22,5 millions de dollars. Le projet de budget de cette année a été assez difficile, évidemment, étant donné tous les inconnus. Je voudrais d'abord remercier le city manager et le chef de finance pour leur travail dur sur le budget draft 2021 que nous tablerons bientôt. Merci aussi à l'équipe de leadership senior et à nos équipes à travers la ville, y compris toutes les équipes et nos agences partenaires pour leur travail et leur entrée dans le budget 2021. Demain, la province d'Ontario tablera son budget 2021 et nos membres étudieront et rapporteront sur son impact sur notre ville et sur nos finances municipales. Je veux rappeler aux membres du Conseil et aux résidents qui regardent aujourd'hui que l'Oréval a maintenu sa mécanique AAA comme un résultat de son fort management financier, malgré ces temps économiques très difficiles. Je voudrais maintenant parler de la façon dont le budget 2021 renforce notre investissement dans la habitation et soutient nos résidents les plus vulnérables en gardant nos résidents en sécurité. Augmenter les prix des maisons, les pertes de travail comme un résultat du COVID-19 et les contraintes imposées par la distanciation sociale. Ces résultats ont résulté en un augmentation du nombre de l'absence d'habitus et un significant augmentation du nombre de personnes en danger d'absence d'habitus. Les seniors, les pauvres travaillants, les nouveaux arrivants et d'autres sans revenu fixe sont perturbés disproportionnellement. Je suis heureux d'annoncer que le budget 2021 inclut une investissement de 15 millions de dollars dans la habitation affordable. Je suis fier de cet investissement dans le logement habitable dans notre ville. Cela apporte la contribution totale du capital à 45 millions de dollars depuis 2019. Je suis également heureux de dire que 5 millions de la 15 millions est une augmentation dans le budget de la habitation affordable. C'est en addition au 1 million de base du budget de 2020. Nous pouvons anticiper que la contribution de la ville de 15 millions va lever au moins l'équivalent de l'argent des gouvernements provinciaux et fédéraux. Cela est attendu à la création d'environ 250 nouvelles unités de habitation supportantes et accessibles. Et ce budget de base augmenté contribuera à 60 millions de dollars pour la fin des 10 années à venir. Nous attendons que cette quantité soit augmentée par 10 millions des revenus de développement projectifs, des revenus d'impôt et 10 millions de la vente de terres suppluses. Évidemment, le City of Ottawa ne peut pas y aller seul quand il s'agit du combat contre l'absence d'habitus. De toute évidence, la ville d'Oréval ne peut mener seule la lot contre l'intérêt. Le 10 septembre 2020, la habitation de la commune a reçu la plus grande investissement dans la habitation accessible dans sa histoire du gouvernement fédéral. Merci à la contribution de 168 millions de CMHC, la habitation de la commune construira Gladstone Village, qui est environ 700 unités. Cette investissement créera plus de 200 unités de rentabilisation près du transit public, complétée avec des services de soutien communautaire. Le City est aussi en train de proposer une proposition pour la Sommerset Street West pour un espace vert et un soutien communautaire pour Gladstone Village. Nous espérons avoir un avertissement de cette propriété tôt au jour de la nouvelle année. Nous avons récemment reçu une notification du ministre Hussein du gouvernement fédéral que l'Oréval a été attribué 32 millions de dollars à travers la initiative de la housing rapide. Ce financement verra les solutions de housing rapides pour ceux qui ont la plus besoin dans notre communauté. Ce nouveau financement apporte la volonté totale de la ville de 47 millions de dollars en 2021 pour la construction de nouvelles unités accessibles. Nous allons également financer 33 millions de dollars vers les agences de habitation et d'absence d'habitus en 2021. Cette quantité soutiendra la gestion des cas, la prévention des pertes de habitation et l'investissement opérationnel pour la habitation supportante. Si vous faites en sorte que le dépôt opérationnel de la ville de 112 millions de dollars pour la habitation et les 47 millions de dollars de financement capitalisé, la ville dépenserait un montant historique en 2021 sur la habitation. C'est un total d'investissement de 159 millions de dollars pour construire et soutenir la habitation accessible et d'autres initiatives d'absence d'habitus. Je regarde l'avenir de travailler fermement avec tous les membres du Conseil et de fournir plus de habitation pour les membres les plus vulnérables de notre communauté. Et avec une augmentation du coût de vie de 485 000 $, le programme de financement communautaire bénéficiera d'une investissement total d'environ 25 millions. Cette quantité va vers les prestataires de services sociaux de la communauté qui offrent des services aux résidents qui sont confrontés aux plus grandes besoins dans la ville. Le budget 2021 inclut aussi 500 000 $ pour les agences pour financer en transition vers le nouveau cadre de financement communautaire. Cette revue de financement communautaire mènera des recommandations plus tard en 2021 et j'ai hâte d'en voir les résultats. En addition, la ville a investi en financement d'urgence à des agences communautaires pour les dépenses liées au COVID et aux programmes d'urgence. C'est un total d'environ 500 000 $ pour répondre aux besoins liés au COVID-19. Le secteur de soins et des années communes en Oréval a été dramatiquement touché par les hauteurs de la pression du COVID-19 dans notre communauté. Le City of Ottawa est reconnaissant à ses partenaires et partenaires fédéraux pour le réinvestissement des investissements reçus jusqu'à la date en réponse au COVID-19. Comme l'impact du COVID-19 continue à évoluer, des soutiens supplémentaires seront requis. Cela assurera la continuité de la susténabilité du secteur de soins et des années communes et aidera à la récupération économique de l'Oréval et de la province entière. C'est difficile de parler du COVID-19 sans penser au impact dévastateur que la pandémie a eu sur nos citoyens seniors, surtout les citoyens seniors vivant dans des maisons de soins à long terme, surtout les années en soins du long terme. Je veux remercier Dean Let, directeur du City de soins à long terme et son équipe incroyable. Leur engagement et dedication aux résidents et à leur soins est vraiment irréversible. Depuis le début de la pandémie, notre équipe de soins à long terme a implémenté des protocoles de sécurité pour prévenir le spread de l'infection dans les maisons. Les niveaux de staff ont été augmentés et des mesures de prévention et de contrôle sont maintenant en place. Je voudrais envoyer un salut spécial à tous les employés dédiés dans nos maisons de soins à long terme. Sans votre dedication et persévérance, il n'y a aucun doute que la situation en Oréval pourrait être beaucoup, beaucoup pire. Pour soutenir votre travail, le budget 2021 inclut les suivants: Plus de 9 millions de dollars seront investis dans le staffing, PPE et contrôle d'infection pour prévenir le spread du COVID-19. Le City offre aussi 7,5 millions de dollars pour les renovations, l'équipement et les améliorations de l'accessibilité à ses quatre maisons de soins à long terme qui opèrent le City of Ottawa. Cela soutiendra la sécurité, la santé et la confort de nos résidents et de nos employés. Le budget 2021 fournit aussi le commitment du Conseil à investir dans la sécurité de nos résidents. Nous faisons d'autres investissements importants pour garder notre communauté en sécurité. Le City a besoin de plus de paramétriques pour garder la vitesse de notre ville rapide et pour garder les temps de réponse en accord avec les standards actuels. À la fin du mandat du Conseil, je promets de travailler avec le Conseil pour contrer 54 paramétriques supplémentaires dans les quatre prochaines années. Le budget 2021 fournit de l'investissement pour contrer 14 nouveaux paramétriques frontiers, le troisième installation dans notre plan de quatre ans. En partenariat avec l'hôpital d'Oréval, nos paramétriques communautaires ont également été déployées dans les zones noires et les maisons de soins à long terme dans la ville qui sont en acte de rétroaction. Le budget 2021 inclut aussi 7,5 millions de dollars pour construire une nouvelle station de feu à Canada Nord et 2 millions de dollars pour construire une facility paramédicale à l'Est End. Angeledt, le service policière d'Oréval a tablé leur budget draft qui est de 3% sur le côté impôt plus 1,5% en augmentation d'assessment. L'OPS est un partenaire vital travaillant en dessous de la publicité de l'Oréval, le comité et les services sociaux et d'autres organisations externes. Travaillant ensemble, nous pouvons mieux... nous pouvons faire mieux pour mieux traiter ces questions comme la santé mentale, la pauvreté et le soutien communautaire. Je suis d'accord que la sécurité communautaire est une responsabilité partagée. Maintenant, comme une société, nous devons prendre un approche plus holistique pour résoudre les crimes et traiter les problèmes sociaux. C'est pourquoi l'OPS et le City ont travaillé ensemble pour changer le focus vers l'expansion des initiatives de santé et de sécurité dirigées par la communauté. Le City et l'OPS font activement le refaisement de notre plan de sécurité communautaire et de bien-être. Ce plan cherche à aborder les causes plus profondément liées au crime, focus sur la prévention, utiliser les partenariats et prendre un approche multifacile de la sécurité communautaire. Le plan de sécurité communautaire et de bien-être aligne avec les initiatives en cours pour atteindre des résultats et des résultats intangibles. Ce plan inclut le plan de habitation et d'absence d'habitus, stratégie de soins et d'années communes, cadre de financement communautaire, stratégie de santé mentale, équité femmes et hommes, race et veterans, modernisation des services sociaux, réduction de la pauvreté, sécurité alimentaire et la stratégie de neighborhood prioritaires. Le budget 2021 maintient le soutien pour l'addition de 85 nouveaux officers policiers approuvés dans ce mandat. L'OPS espère voir 30 nouveaux officers rejoindre le service en 2021. Je voudrais remercier le chef de slowly et le CFO Jeff Lerturnell et toute la board et président de la police pour leur supervision budgétaire. Merci à vous trois pour votre leadership dans ces processus budgétaires. Je et tous les membres du Conseil sont impressionnés par leur volonté de chercher de nouvelles façons de trouver des efficiencies, de streamliner les opérations autour des besoins communautaires et de trouver des économies en cours. Le budget 2021 est aussi concerné d'investir dans notre infrastructure pour la prospérité future. Le financement pour maintenir et renouveler des actes comme les routes, les parrains et les institutions de ville augmentera de 25 millions cette année, nous amenerant à 171 millions investis en 2021. Le gap d'infrastructure existant sera complètement réglé dans sept ans, au lieu des 10 années projectives, en ajoutant pas de nouveaux dettes. Comme les membres du Conseil, nous entendons constamment de nos résidents qu'ils veulent que nous investions dans les routes et l'infrastructure de notre ville. La condition de nos routes et de notre infrastructure est une priorité dans tous les coins de la ville d'Oréval. C'est pourquoi, en 2021, le budget de resurface des routes augmentera à 45 millions de dollars, plus de l'average annuelle de 35,5 millions au dernier mandat du Conseil. L'investissement dans la resurface des routes inclut la route Hunt Club à droite de Paul Anka Drive à l'aéroport Parkway à River Ward, l'avenue Kilburn à Alta Vista, la route Blanchfield et Ausgood, la route Fallowfield de la trans-ouest à Woodruff Avenue à Barhaven, la rue Saint-Jacques à Orléans et la route Maryville de Slack à Viewmount et la route West Hunt de Maryville à Antares Drive à Knoxville-Maryville, pour nommer juste quelques-uns des nombreux projets de route qui vont se dérouler en 2021. Nos investissements d'infrastructure rurale atteindront 40 millions de dollars en 2021, plus de l'average de quatre ans de 39,7 millions. Certaines de nos investissements ruraux incluent 4,1 million pour repaver la rue Bank entre Marionville et la route Mitch Owens. 2,7 millions de dollars pour repaver la route River entre la station Flag et la route Mitch Owens. 2,5 millions pour construire 27 couverts de drainage à Ausgood. 2,3 millions pour construire 43 couverts de drainage. 2 millions pour améliorer la pompe d'eau de carburant de la pétrole. Et 1,6 millions pour repaver la route Thomas A. Dolan entre Dunrobin et la route Six Line à l'Est Carlton March. Le budget 2021 investit aussi plus de 57 millions pour les projets de croissance des routes qui sont financés presque entièrement par les charges de développement, y compris 9,7 millions pour étendre la ligne de Stranherd entre Mara Vista Drive et Jockville Road. 7,3 millions pour étendre l'aéroport de la rue de Brookfield à Hunt Club. 18,9 millions pour étendre la rue Bank entre Leitrim et la rue Dunskipper. Le budget 2021 permettra aussi à la ville de resurfacer, renouveler ou réhabiliter environ 116 km de routes dans la ville. Nous savons que l'Oréval a l'un des plus grands réseaux de transport au Canada. Les équipes de ville nettoient régulièrement plus de 6 000 km de routes et 2 300 km de parrains dans la ville. Je suis heureux de dire que le budget d'exploitation du winter reflète maintenant les actualités d'三個三年平均的 pour le periodis de 2016 à 2018, pour un total d'environ 81 millions de dollars. Cette année, plus que jamais, nous devrons encourager les gens à sortir et à profiter de l'hiver. C'est pourquoi je suis heureux que le City fournisse de nouveau plus de 35 000 $ à l'Alliance des routes de l'hiver pour la distribution à ses membres. Nous espérons que la partenariat avec le NCC contribuera à 25 000 $ pour les routes de ski et de vélo. Le budget 2021 inclut aussi 2 millions de dollars pour les mesures de calme du trafic des quartiers. Chaque conseil reçoit de nouveau 50 000 $ pour les initiatives de sécurité routière et leurs propres bannières. Il y a aussi 512 000 $ mis en place pour les croisements de voies qui nous aideront à améliorer la sécurité des voitures à des croisements clés dans la ville. Et le budget 2021 inclut aussi 12 millions pour les améliorations des intersections. Le programme de contrôle des intersections, qui offre de nouveaux signaux de trafic et aborde les préoccupations de la sécurité dans les zones de croissance. Le revenu de la caméra d'emploiement automatique est budgé à 6 millions de dollars. Et une augmentation de 1,8 million est attendue par 10 nouvelles caméras de rouge. Le revenu de 1,2 million de ce revenu sera transféré au budget de la police d'Oréval en 2021. Le reste sera investi dans les initiatives de sécurité routière déjà approuvées comme partie du plan d'action de sécurité routière. Comme vous le savez, les caméras d'emploiement automatique ont été en place depuis que nous avons lancé le programme en juillet. Il y a un total d'8 sites, tous situés près des écoles, et quatre caméras sont actuellement utilisées pour appliquer les restrictions de vitesse et les dérouler entre les huit sites. À la fin de septembre, plus de 37 000 tickets ont été émis, ce qui pourrait générer au-dessus de 3,1 million de dollars pour la ville. À la demande de moi-même et du city manager, les services de transport ont été demandés à acheter quatre caméras supplémentaires. Elles seront déployées dans les lieux outstanding dans les mois à venir. Le revenu généré de ces quatre caméras sera investi dans les mesures de sécurité routière, y compris les améliorations prioritaires des intersections. Ce projet pilote connaît beaucoup de succès et nous permet d'investir davantage dans la sécurité routière. Le budget 2021 inclut aussi une investissement de 4 millions de dollars vers le plan d'action de sécurité routière. 2,4 millions pour de nouveaux dispositifs de contrôle de trafic. 806 000 $ pour des mesures temporaires de calme du trafic. 512 000 $ vers le programme de croisement de voies. Plus de 1 million pour le programme d'amélioration de la sécurité. 389 000 $ pour l'amélioration de la sécurité de la voie. Et 107 000 $ pour le programme d'amélioration de la sécurité de la cyclique. Encore une fois, le budget 2021 inclut de l'investissement dans l'activité de transport avec une investissement dans les plans de voie et de cyclique de 12,5 millions. Cela inclut 5 millions pour les stations de cyclisme, juste plus de 3 millions pour les stations de voie, 2,5 millions pour les structures de cyclisme et de voie, et 1,2 million pour connecter les ponts perdus. Le City investit aussi dans les parcs, les stations de recreation et les institutions communautaires, y compris l'extension de la zone Blackburn à Innisward, le parc La Rush et Kitchessipi, l'extension de la courcre de la communauté à l'Est Carlton March. expansion in West Carlton March, the Cobble Hill Park Development and Expansion in Barhaven, River Chase Park in Canada North, and River Rain Park Development in Rideau Vanier, to name just a few. Again, in 2021, we'll continue to fund the $2.4 million ward-specific recreation infrastructure investment fund. This fund provides each member of council with a total of $100,000 to be used for the remainder of this term of council. Budget 2021 also includes $6 million in park improvements, a new gazebo at McNab Park, new sports lights at Cars Recreation Centre, and new asphalt tennis courts in Carson Grove Park. Budget 2021 also includes $100,000 to complete preliminary design and to undertake community consultations for the Beacon Hill North Community Centre expansion. And Budget 2021 also invests $500,000 to invest the planning for a new East Urban Library branch located in Cumberland Ward. Our city's vibrancy also relies on the key investments made by small businesses in our communities. And we can all witness in our respective neighbourhoods, small businesses invest in significant ways. They bring our main streets to life and turn them into the dynamic gathering places we've come to know. But we know Main Street businesses have been hit hard by this pandemic, and they need our help now more than ever. Through our Economic Partners Task Force, the city has put in place several measures to help small businesses through the, throughout the pandemic, and that work, of course, is At the October 28th council meeting, we approved a waiver of building permit fees required for a patio tent structure. This is intended to allow restaurants to provide alternative dining arrangements while indoor dining is restricted, although, of course, we got the news yesterday that some of those restrictions are being lifted. There'll still be a need if restaurateurs want to have that expanded patio to do so without being charged for it. And consistent with the council direction this past summer, we're proposing that the monthly patio fees remain at $0 for 2021. This takes into account the severe impact of COVID-19 on restaurants and shops. This foregone patio revenue is included in the overall COVID-19 pressures. And following the presentation of the winter patio programme at Transportation Committee on Monday, our patio team will soon be launching a $150,000 grant programme. This will help BIAs and other business associations deploy beautification or small capital projects to help them attract customers in their business districts. As we head into the late fall and winter, I want to remind everyone of the importance of shopping local. Please support our small businesses through these very difficult times. Je vous en prie appui nos petits entreprises lors de cette période difficile. We should all go out of our way to shop in local and family-owned businesses who need our support now more than ever. Over the course of the coming weeks and months, we will need to chart a course for returning the city to prosperity, for creating an environment that leaves no one behind in our attempts to bring back the jobs lost during the pandemic. In the first few weeks of 2021, I will call on all members of council and city partners to join in this united effort to rebuild our city's economy. This will require new ways of thinking as well as unprecedented collaboration with our economic development partners and other levels of government. We'll need to take an all-hands-on-deck approach to rebuild our local economy. What is becoming clear is that we must stay in lockstep with our provincial and federal partners, not only on the pandemic response. For years to come, we must work together on the much-needed economic stimulus and recovery plan that will require, will be required to get our local economy firing on all cylinders again. This is not about a flashy slogan or nice stats. It's about striving to support our local businesses and ensuring that they are, there are economic opportunities for all workers as we exit the pandemic. Protecting the environment and investing in greater climate resiliency are an important cornerstone of the 2021 budget. We all know that building safer and resilient communities requires a balanced approach to spending, and it's also about planning for the future. Il faut évidemment planifier pour l'avenir. That is why the city recently carried an environmental strategy that targets 80% reduction in GHG emissions by 2050. With a contribution of $2.6 million through Ottawa Hydro Dividend, $11 million will be provided to support energy evolution. Leveraging federal and provincial funds, the focus will be on energy efficiency, conservation, and renewable energy generation projects. The goal is to invest in projects where the initial investment is repaid over time by the annual energy efficiency savings. The city's highly successful partnership with Ottawa Hydro for the replacement of the city's streetlights with energy-efficient LED is a good example of that partnership. Budget 2021 includes an additional $3 million for the Energy Management Investment Strategy for a total investment of $12 million over the term of the council. We're also working on increasing the city's capacity for climate resiliency. This includes $2.5 million to implement the Ottawa River Action Plan and the Wet Weather Infrastructure Master Plan. Budget 2021 also includes $300,000 for the Wild Parsonet Management Programme. There is also $1.5 million to plant 125,000 trees and $1.2 million for solid waste projects, including expanding the recycling in parks project. I now want to touch on how we keep transit affordable while paying for and investing in the transit system we want. As a result of COVID-19, ridership and transit revenues have decreased significantly, not only in Ottawa, but around the country and around the world. Cette année, nos services de transport commun font face à de nouveaux défis. This has created 2020 transit shortfall of $123.7 million. This deficit has been offset by $1.5 million in government funding to help pay for the cost of enhanced cleaning for buses and trains, as well as $74.9 million in Phase 1 funding from the Safe Start Programme. The city is applying for Phase 2 Safe Start Restart funding for the remainder of 2020. We're anticipating the provincial Safe Start funding will cover the first quarter to March 31st, 2021. Fares will not increase in 2020, given council's directive earlier this year to freeze fares until LRT service improve markedly. This fare freeze has resulted in a base budget pressure of $5.1 million in 2021. To address this budget pressure, using transit revenue would have had to increase fares by more than 5% in 2021. This would disproportionately have hurt frontline workers who most need transit to get to and from work and appointments during the pandemic. We didn't think this was a fair approach during these difficult times for so many vulnerable residents. And that's why the cost of the Equa Pass and Community Pass will both be frozen at 2018 rates for the third consecutive year. That's an additional investment of $185,000 in affordable transit. Regular fares will increase by 2.5% effective January 1st because we need to stay on track with our long-range financial plan for transit. This is our blueprint for making long-term investments in sustainable transit and the city we can afford. And I want to remind council colleagues and residents about the largest single investment we are making in transit, our $4.6 billion investment in Stage 2 LRT. We'll spend just over $1 billion of that in 2021 on the construction of Stage 2. This will bring benefits to, bring the benefits of LRT to Linebank and Airport, East de Trim, West de Moody, and Algonquin College. We'll also be investing in other important transit projects, including $13 million to improve Blair and Tunny's Pasture Stations, $6 million for bus operator barriers to enhance the safety of our drivers, $3 million to modify roads, signals, and other traffic measures to improve bus reliability, $1 million to install new bus pads, shelters, and other improvements at bus stops, and $500,000 to improve accessibility features across the transit system. Before I conclude today's remarks, I'd like to say a few words about Ottawa Public Health. This includes the work that the city of Ottawa has undertaken to protect our residents against the pandemic. That work is shared across thousands of employees and hundreds of work units across the city. Because of the broad impact of municipal services that have been impacted by COVID-19, it's difficult to describe the incredible work that has, that the OPH team has spearheaded in 2020 to keep us safe and informed. The close collaboration with our city manager and senior leadership team and partner agencies has been impressive, to say the least. On behalf of Ottawa City Council, I want to once again thank Dr Vera Etches, our Medical Officer of Health. Thank you to her team for their outstanding work and for their unwavering dedication to our collective safety in these very challenging times. I also want to thank our city manager, Steve Canellakis, who's provided exceptional leadership during the extraordinary times. This pandemic has forced many of us to make very difficult personal decisions, decisions about putting our kids in school, hard choices about the living situation of aging parents. Many small business owners have had to make heart-wrenching decisions about letting employees go or shutting their doors. Plusieurs ont malheureusement zû fermé leurs portes. Some have unfortunately had to make the very difficult decision, as I mentioned, of closing down. The pandemic has caused us to reach out in new ways to vulnerable people in our lives. It's changed how we work, behave, socialize, and interact. La pandémie a changé presque chaque aspect de nos vies. I'm convinced that Dr Etches and her team in close collaboration with the city of Ottawa team have provided the best evidence-based advice. I know they're very aware of the huge ramifications of their recommendations on the lives of our residents. I also want to thank councillor Keith Egli for his leadership at the Ottawa Board of Health. He has proven to be a strong advocate for OPH during these tumultuous times. I'm under the impression that he might be thinking that this mandate a little broader than he bargained for when he first agreed to chair OPH. I also want to again convey council's strong support for OPH's budget position. This was clearly outlined at their board meeting on Monday, November 2nd. It will come as no surprise to anyone listening today that this is not a normal year for Ottawa Public Health. And let's break this down into three key pieces. Firstly, OPH is currently awaiting confirmation that their forecasted $12 million over expenditure for 2020 will be fully funded by the province. And I raised that issue both with the premiers I mentioned earlier and earlier this week with Minister Elliott. We hope to see language in the provincial budget tomorrow reconfirming that this support is forthcoming. Secondly, OPH expects to continue to have, to absorb significant COVID-19-related costs into 2021. The OPH board was briefed on the projected 2021 budget impact on Monday evening, which currently stands at $22.5 million. As was discussed at the October 14th council meeting, it's my intention to continue working closely with councillor Egli as Chair of OPH. Together, we will work with all members of council to ensure that the province honors its commitment to fully reimburse the city for the COVID-19-related expenses we incurred in 2020 and for those anticipated expenses in 2021. Until this happens, the city will continue to backstop OPH's expenditure levels required to continue to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. Thirdly, the OPH board was also advised on Monday that OPH has had to privatize the COVID response over the delivery of other core services in 2020. I'm convinced that all members of council support the board's approach to ramp up and reinforce the delivery of OPH core services to prevent negative health impacts. Concurrently, it's important for all members of council to know that Budget 2021 provides OPH with an additional base adjustment of $240,000. This will allow OPH to undertake the 2021 fiscal year without having to reduce the FTE account. I believe we can all agree that this is not the time to be cutting employees at OPH. I also want members of council to know that the Chair and I will engage the province of Ontario on this issue. We need a clear signal from the province that it's prepared to fund appropriate base increases to OPH budgets now and in the future. Now, since I was elected mayor, I've had made the commitment to the residents of Ottawa to keep taxes low, to keep our city affordable, and to invest in our infrastructure, and most importantly, to take care of our most vulnerable residents. Never in my history as mayor has this been more important, and never has it required a greater level of resolve to achieve. I'm also proud that we've worked especially hard on this prudent, affordable, and balanced budget, a budget that responsibly manages the risks associated with COVID-19. The 3% tax increase amounts to an extra $115 for the average urban homeowner and $88 for the average rural homeowner. We have all heard from residents, and I believe they're prepared to contribute a modest increase to improve our transit and to maintain our infrastructure, to build for the future and to provide services to keep residents safe. I think that Budget 2021 strikes the right balance in meeting council's approved priorities. With council support, I will continue to work tirelessly to ensure that Ottawa continues to secure its fair share of funding from upper-tier governments. This includes moving forward on city-building projects, such as extending LRT to Canada, Stittsville, and Barhaven, on multiple city-wide terms of council priorities such as roads, housing, and the environment, and the funding required to weather the current pandemic. I also believe this budget has enough built-in flexibility to mitigate, rather, the uncertainty of what may come in the year ahead. I'm certain that most, if not all, members of council accept that there's some degree of risk inherent in our 2021 budgeting exercise. No one, I repeat that, no one can accurately predict how soon the pandemic will come to an end, nor how will it impact the city's economy and finances in the future. I'm convinced that you will agree that nothing is more important than maintaining our core services. Perhaps more importantly now is the time to keep our collective eye on those most in need across our various communities that make up this great city. I want to thank all residents and members of council who contributed to ideas in the Budget 2021 process. Over the last few weeks, work consultations have occurred on the budget virtually, and we've heard from many residents regarding a wide range of often competing budget priorities. More so than any other year, residents are realistic about the city's fiscal capacity. They know we must set a limit to the number of priorities we can achieve, and they want us to live within our means. This has not been the typical consultation process, and I think we all miss the face-to-face dialogue on these critical issues. Merci à tous nos résidents qui ont contribué au processus.
I'd like to thank all those who have contributed to the 2021 budget process.
Committee members for their input today. Thank you to the work, thank you for the work ahead to facilitate your budgets at your respective committees. Merci à tous les conseillers.
Thanks to all councillors for their ideas and their participation in this budget process.
The whole team in the mayor's office, who worked closely on this, including Robyn Guest and Serge Arpa, as well as other members of our team, the city manager, our new Chief Financial Officer, Wendy Steffensen, on Budget 2021, and all members of council on their Budget 2021 proposals. The year ahead poses challenges and contains many unknowns, but I believe that prudent fiscal stewardship has made our city resilient. With the support of our residents and continued commitment from our federal and provincial partners, we are on solid footing as we work towards and together to meet the challenges of the drastically changed world in which we find ourselves. I'll now pass it over to the city manager for the city manager's report, but first we have a motion by councillor Luloff and second by councillor Dudas, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Be it resolved that the mayor's remarks given at the city council meeting on November 4th, 2020 be appended to the minutes of today's council meeting.
On the motion.
Carrie.
Carrie. Thank you. Merci. Councillor Egli, if you'd like to introduce reports, s'il vous plaît, puis par conseiller Deans.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. The following reports related to the 2021 draft budget estimates be received and tabled. One, the report from the Deputy City Treasurer, Corporate Finance, entitled 2021 Operating and Capital Budgets. Two, the report from the Committee of Adjustment, entitled Committee of Adjustment, 2021 Operating Budget. Three, the report from Crime Prevention Ottawa, entitled 2021 Draft Operating Budget, Crime Prevention Ottawa. Four, the report from the Ottawa Police Services Board, entitled Ottawa Police Services Board, 2021 Draft Operating and Capital Budgets. Five, the report from the Ottawa Public Library Board, entitled Ottawa Public Library, 2021 Draft Budget Estimates. Six, the report from the Ottawa Board of Health, entitled 2021 Draft Operating Budget for the Ottawa Board of Health. And that the rules of procedure be suspended to receive and consider the following reports from the Innovative Client Services Department as they provide information supplemental to the 2021 budget reports being tabled at this meeting. One, the report from the Director of Fleet Services, entitled 2021 Fleet Vehicle and Equipment Plans, information supplemental to the budget estimates. Two, the report from the Director of Human Resources, entitled FTE Analysis Report, information supplemental to the budget estimates. And the council received and considered Transportation Committee Report 12, which was issued with final agenda and special meeting notice on November 3rd, 2020.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on the motion?
Yeah, just on the Transportation Committee, one, Mayor.
Sorry, what's the question?
Is, is the Transportation Committee the full report or just the two items that they're in?
Just the two items.
It's just the two items. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So on councillor Egli's motion cited by councillor Deans.
Carrie.
Carrie.
So just colleagues, for the benefit of you and people watching, the process we'll follow is that the city manager will offer remarks, followed by the presentation of the budget by the treasurer, the CFO, and we'll hold questions on that, and then we'll go to our various agencies because they are coming from the outside and out of respect for their time, we'll do them one by one, and after their presentation, that's the time to ask questions. But again, as, as you all know, because this is your third budget that the whole team here has worked on, these are questions, technical, procedural, or very high-level. We're not getting into the weeds, this is simply tabling the budget, and then it goes out to your respective committees for public consultation and drilling down into more specifics. So I'd ask that you respect that tradition of procedural, technical, or very high-level questions to the delegates and/or to our city staff. So we'll begin with city manager Steve Canellakis with the presentation. Mr City Manager.
Thank you, Mr Watson, Mayor Watson. I want to start off
I want to start off by extending a special thank you to Wendy Stephenson, our Chief Financial Officer, and the entire finance team for their efforts over the year to address the pressures from the COVID-19 pandemic. It's been no small feat to navigate the challenges that we faced with this year's budget and all the planning and careful thought and consideration that went into the development of the draft 2021 budget. I feel very fortunate to have their expertise and leadership on our team.
Our team is very lucky to be able to take advantage of the leadership.
They all played a significant role to ensure that the draft 2021 budget was within council's set tax envelope without compromising service to residents in the pandemic emergency response efforts. They provided creative ideas, contributed to mitigation measure discussions, they implemented and adapted to discretionary freezes and hiring freezes in each of their areas, they provided comprehensive lists of department and projects that could be deferred to prioritize a pandemic emergency response, and many have redeployed their staff to assist other departments and services experiencing high demands and pressures. Their support has been critical to the success of addressing our financial challenges we've been faced with and the demands on our services and our workforce. I'd also like to thank council sincerely for their feedback and input over the last two months as the budget draft was developed. Your contributions are always valued and appreciated and played a big role in developing this budget before we today. In addition, I'd like to thank council on behalf of staff for providing clear budget directions. The directions that are approved by council are invaluable. They provide staff with a financial framework for which to bring back a budget that meets your needs. Council's approval of the 2018 to 22 strategic plan, which sets priorities for this term of council, ensures that staff include financial needs to continue moving forward on these council's set priorities. That is our roadmap that council has given us in terms of moving forward this term of council. I can assure council that other than the priorities that we tabled last month that have been moderately impacted, we are moving forward on council-directed programs outlined in the city's strategic plan for this term. As you know, responding to the pandemic has put an extraordinary pressure on our organization. Our workforce has been strained to maintain the services residents count on and respond to the evolving provincial orders in delivering city services, including the immediate and growing community needs resulting from COVID-19 right now and through the long winter that's not too far ahead. I want to echo what Mayor Watson referenced in his opening comments, that demands on our services have never been greater. Ils demand des services plus nombreux que jamais. In particular, the demands on community and social services in Ottawa Public Health have been unprecedented and show no sign of slowing down. Hundreds of city staff have been deployed to these areas to support standing-up facilities for test sites, influenza immunization clinics, isolation centers, planning ahead, and the hiring of almost 1,000 staff to support Ottawa Public Health for testing results and contact tracing has put incredible demands on our human resources group and our IT support functions. Staff are also directly impacted by COVID-19, whether it be through infection or isolation requirements due to exposure often resulting from frontline services provision. Many of our staff have continued to work in the community since day one of the emergency response. They never left their posts. They navigated change like never before, new safety measures, new public health guidance, new operating procedures, new service delivery models, and for some, new responsibilities. But their tireless dedication to support the community and continue to deliver services that residents depend on has made a difference on how we've been able to respond to the pandemic. As we've heard from Mayor Watson, reassurances have been made from the provincial and federal governments to support municipalities with outstanding COVID-19-related costs and pressures. Should all or part of our financial pressures not be addressed, staff are developing mitigation measures to close the gap and balance the 2021 budget in all service areas, including transit. If any of these mitigation measures need to be implemented, should the funding from other levels of government not come through, we will be coming back to councils with sure a balanced budget for 2021. We don't want to be in the position to have to act on these mitigation measures, however, we have a contingency plan in place should things not go as planned. I want to give council that assurance. There's no denying that the year ahead still poses challenges and contains many unknowns, but given what we know and what we're anticipating, I believe the draft 2021 budget strikes a balance between supporting community needs during the pandemic, ensuring essential city services for our residents, and advancing council's key priorities for our future prosperity and economic recovery. I now like to pass it over to Wendy Stephenson, our CFO, to walk council through the high-level draft 2021 budget. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Steve. Bon matin, merci, Monsieur le Maire, et Steve. Today's presentation is an overview of all the city's budgets, including police, public health, library, and transit. And today, we're going to cover the 2021 budget highlights, our assumptions, provide a brief overview of our operating and our capital budgets and funding sources, and present our estimated requirements to continue to respond, rebuild, and recover from the COVID-19 pandemic. And only a summary is provided in this presentation, as the detailed budgets will be presented to each committee, board, or commission. And today's budget reflects the direction approved in October. You can move to the next slide, please. Various factors must be taken into consideration when developing this year's budget. Non-COVID pressures are accommodated within our 3% tax increase, and to date, the city has received $124 million for Phase 1 of the SAFE restart funding. Applications for the remaining shortfall under the Phase 2 application funding covers the municipal stream, which is our tax-supported area, to the end of 2020, and the transit stream to the end of Quarter 1, 2021. One-time COVID impacts are included in the 2021 budget with the assumption that 100% of the funding will come from senior levels of government. Financial mitigation strategies implemented in 2020 can be used if required in 2021 should backstop funding not be forthcoming. This budget has no growth FTEs with the exception of paramedics and police, and the city will maintain its operations within its existing complement. To continue our response to COVID, temporary resources will be used to continue to support our community. Another factor is the impact of our collective agreements and changes in our labor regulations, for example, required increases in the contribution to our capital pension plan. Inflation also has to be included to ensure the budget is keeping pace with the cost of us providing our services. And base adjustments are also made to reflect any 2020 budget experience that will continue, for example, the increasing pressure on the city's insurance. We also have to build into the budget the cost of maintaining the city's growing infrastructure and delivering services to a growing population. And lastly, we've had to consider any changes in provincial funding, such as the elimination of the doubling of the gas tax or changes to provincial programs. You can move to the next slide, please. The budget directions were approved in October with the main direction to limit the increase to the municipal portion of the property tax bill to no more than 3%. Each component of the municipal tax bill, which includes the police and the transit, are increasing at different rates, but the overall tax increase remains at 3%. The annual addition of taxation revenues from our new assessment generates approximately 1.5%, and user fees and charges are to increase with the cost of delivering the services as stated in our fiscal framework, our long-range financial plan, including incremental COVID-19 cost recoveries. This budget also reflects a 2.5% increase in transit fares on January 1st, 2021, and no fare increase will incur in 2020, meaning transit users experience a 15-month fare freeze. And the budget proposes the fare freeze continue for Equipass, Community Pass, and Equipairs for all of 2021 as well. This equates to an additional $185,000 budget pressure over and above the $235,000 pressure required to cover the discount on these passes in 2021, which is included in the Community and Social Services budget. The rate budget has been developed in accordance with the long-range financial plan for our rate programs. You can flip to the next slide, please. Staff have conducted a thorough review of financial mitigation measures, and we've used all of our tools to absorb our base pressures with no frontline service impact. We've offset the growth-related pressures and some of our COVID-19 costs. Our discretionary spending and hiring pauses currently in place will continue into 2021, which assists in lowering the city's expenses. Additional budget reduction strategies have been initiated in parallel to this budget process, and we will use them if we need them. Further mitigations will have impacts on our reserves, our capital projects, and service levels. I'm now going to pass it off to Isabel, who will speak to the approximate tax and water bill impacts. Isabel, over to you. You can move to the next slide, please.
Thank you, Wendy. With this budget, the average assessed at $415,000, there'll be an increase of $115 per year, $9.58 per month, that is 3%. For a rural home, there will be an increase of $88 per year, $8.33 per month, and 2.8% in total. For a commercial property, $231 per year, or $19.25 per month. The value in dollar is estimated only based on the budget. The real amount will be based on the reassessment of properties and the policy adopted by council before finalizing the tax rate. Since the bill has various components, and the water bill will increase also at various rates. For an average property in an urban area, the global average increase will be 4.5%, $37 per year, or $3 a month. For a single rural home, not connected, the increase is $7 per year, or a few cents per month. The rate increase are in line with the operational requirements. Thank you, Isabel.
The total budget for 2021 is $3.94 billion, and it's made up of 12 different service areas. Over 58% of the operating budget is made up of four key services, so our water and sewer, our police services, our transit, and our community and social services. And you'll see on the next slide, much of the revenue for these services comes from sources other than tax. Water and sewer is paid for revenue by the water bill, and half of the transit operating costs are paid by fare revenue, and over 80% of the community and social services are paid by provincial and federal funding. Capital contributions make up the fifth-largest percentage of our budget at $359 million. And you can stay on this slide. The next graph shows the sources of funding for the $3.9 billion budget. User fees and property taxes are the main sources of revenue to support the operations at the city. Property taxes and payment in lieu of taxes add up to about $2 billion and make up approximately 51% of the city's total revenues. User fees and service charges are budgeted at $879 million, including revenue from the water bill, our transit fares, recreation fees, and various other fees to recover the cost of delivering user-specific services. The $836 million showed for federal and provincial funding represents the conditional grants for services, so things like social services, childcare services, our long-term care, paramedics, and other. And remember that conditional grants are funds that are not available to be used for any other purpose. And the government funding source also includes one-time funding for the city's 2021 COVID pressures to continue our response and our recovery efforts. You can move to the next slide, please. This slide shows the staffing changes requested in the 2021 budget. These FTE requests address the areas of growth and are primarily funded by increases in funding from the province. The only growth increase in the city services tax area are for an additional 14 paramedics. And you'll see there's a reduction of seven FTEs in community and social services to accommodate for the 50/50 municipal childcare administrative cost sharing imposed by the province. This results in a net overall addition of seven FTEs in the tax service area. There's a decrease in Ottawa Public Library as a result of the cancellation of the light fees and reduction in the associated transactional effort. There's an increase in Ottawa Police Services, which includes growth for 30 additional police officers. And there is a decrease in transit FTEs, and they are a result of efficiencies from operations. Excluding police, the city will see an overall reduction of nine FTEs in 2021. You can move to the next slide, please. In developing the draft budget, one of the first steps is to review the previous year. So we look at where there are cost or revenue increases or decreases that we didn't anticipate but are of a permanent nature, and this table shows key factors from 2020 that will have an impact on 2021. So there is a transfer of $11 million, excuse me. My apologies, I'm just going to go back. This shows the tax target budget funding and the funding capacity that has to be created as a result of the proposed tax increases and the user fee increases and revenue that we're receiving from other levels of government, and this totals $96.6 million. Our new assessment to our property tax base adds an additional $26.2 million in taxes, and the 3% overall tax increase generates another $52.7 million. User fees and revenues are increasing by $16.4 million, and this not only includes our regular inflationary and cost increases for fees like solid waste or transit, our rec services, but also increases in general revenues to the city, so things like our investment revenue, our penalties and interest, as well as the temporary incremental COVID-19 fee cost recovery. The increase of matching funding from the provincial cost sharing is 1.3 million, and it's primarily to cover paramedics. You can move to the next slide, please. So in developing the draft budget, one of the first steps is to review our previous year, where there were cost or revenue increases or decreases that we didn't anticipate but are of a permanent nature. So this table shows the key factors from 2020 that have an impact in 2021. There's a $5 million transfer from the tax base to the Affordable Housing Budget, increasing our annual contribution from $1 million to $6 million, and the overall capital contribution to affordable housing in 2021 is $15 million. As a result of the LED conversion, we see a reduction of $1.5 million in our energy costs. The increase of $3.8 million in the transit base budget is primarily to improve service reliability in 2021, which is offset by a reduction in presto fees due to lower ridership. Also, in 2021, in order to preserve our transit revenue base and eliminate the year-over-year compounding effect, there is a one-time contribution of $5 million from reserves to fund the 2020 fare freeze. And our insurance premiums increased in 2020, and as a result, $5.4 million is added to our base in 2021. You can move to the next slide, please. So next, we have to identify the cost to maintain our services that we're already providing. The inflationary increase for capital renewal funding is the contribution to capital to keep up with inflation and ensure that we're not losing ground in terms of what is needed for the capital spending. And the increase is based on the most recently published infrastructure CPI from 2019, which is 2.3%. Per the Directions report that was approved by council, we're increasing our capital contribution to transit by $5 million to make up for the elimination of the doubling of the provincial gas tax. Got inflationary increases related to fuel pricing, purchase services, contracts, utilities, compensation, legislative increases to CPP are really the largest increases overall. And included is the automated speed enforcement operating costs in 2021 and a one-time contribution to the road safety enforcement capital program. There's an increase on the solid waste contribution to capital to address the increasing capital requirements for this service. And there's also an inflationary increase to community grants of 2% and the full subsidy for the Equipass, the Equipass, and the Community Passes. The pressures are net of any revenues from our COVID-19 temporary cost recovery from fees. You can move to the next slide, please. So the cost of growth for 2021 is approximately $24, or excuse me, $22.4 million, and there's an increase of $5 million that I referenced earlier to the Affordable Housing Base budget, and the overall capital contribution to affordable housing is $15 million. 1.3 million is included for our additional 14 paramedics, and the $2.5 million for traffic services includes 1.5 million for new pavement marking materials, 10 school crossing guards, and $500,000 for the cost of operating the additional 10 red light cameras. Also included in the police budget is $5.8 million for the additional police officers and new services and strategies for 2021. As per the long-range financial plan, there's an additional $6 million contribution to capital for a renewal of assets to continue to close the infrastructure gap and take into consideration the growth of our asset base. This budget reflects no increase to service hours for transit. You can move to the next slide, please. So this budget includes one-time COVID-19-related pressures in 2021 as we continue to respond to the pandemic. These are shown separately within each of the service areas due to the one-time nature of the costs. And the costs relate to an increase in personal protective equipment to provide services in a safe and secure manner to our residents. And there are increases to enhance cleaning and transit and all other areas of the city. There's an increase to temporary resources in various areas such as long-term care, our emergency shelters and homelessness programs to respond and recover from the pandemic. The reduction in transit and recreation revenues are included as we continue to respond and recover from the pandemic. There's a one-time increase to the public health budget, again, to continue our response. And we've assumed that these costs are offset by funding from senior levels of government. And if the funding doesn't materialize, the city has developed financial mitigation strategies that we've implemented in 2020 and also we can implement in 2021 to help fund these pressures. Additional budget reduction strategies have been initiated in parallel to this budget process, and we will use them if we need them. The discretionary spending and hiring pauses currently in place will continue into 2021, which assists in lowering the city's expenses. And additional operational and financial mitigations, including our service reduction, deferral of capital spending, may be required to offset these. You can move to the next slide, please. So this slide summarizes the key service initiatives and projected savings for 2021. Police services savings of $2.7 million relates to the integration of the back office functions and the optimization of the operational processes. The staffing pause currently in place will continue into 2021, which assists in lowering the city's expenses by $14 million. And this includes savings from our summer student program, should it be reduced again in 2021. The $13.3 million includes savings from recreation programming costs, presto fee savings due to lower ridership, and a discretionary spending pause currently in place will continue into 2021. And these are all subject to how the pandemic evolves throughout 2021. And in 2020, our expenditure savings due to COVID impacts were estimated to be around $89 million. And a really good portion of these savings came from our recreation facility closures being approximately $38 million. Approximately $7 million of that was attributed to transit as a reduction in fuel costs and our reduced presto fees. We also had a discretionary spending freeze across the organization, and we significantly reduced our summer student hiring in 2020 and had a staffing pause in place for the full year. You can move to the next slide, please. The increase in revenue. So we'll talk a little bit about our water, wastewater, and stormwater budget highlights. And you'll see here the increase in the revenue is projected to be $17.6 million. And it's based on the assumption that the water consumption will remain at 81.4 million cubic meters. Like the tax budget, the rate budget also has to be balanced. And this additional revenue is set to recover the additional costs of delivering these services. The additional or increase of $8.7 million is to maintain operations, and it's primarily for projected labor contract settlements, increments, and increases in the cost of benefits. Growth through programs and services is $400,000, and it's primarily a result of increasing the base funding to manage system growth in line with our long-range financial plan. The capital contribution is increasing by $8.5 million for all services in total, which is in line with our long-range financial plan for rate-supported capital. You can move to the next slide, please. So we'll now take a look at our capital budgets, and you can move to the next slide. The capital budget reflects various plans approved by council, including the transportation master plan, our infrastructure master plan, our DC background study, and our LFRP that assessed the state of repair of all the capital assets recommended in the plan for closing the infrastructure funding gap. And these plans have all been incorporated in the proposed capital budget for 2021. The one-time federal gas tax funding of $58 million received in 2019 will be allocated to infrastructure renewal over three years. And the $5 million previously approved to address the infrastructure gap will be redirected to transit. So debt is used in this budget within our limits established by council. And our debt servicing is forecasted to be 4.5% of own-source revenues on the tax side and 13% on the rate side for 2021. You can move to the next slide, please. So the proposed $781 million capital budget is funded from a variety of sources and primarily by cash. And you'll see here on this slide the breakdown by service of the capital budget and the areas of which is going to be distributed to. So you can move to the next slide, please. And this slide shows the funding source. So you'll see that the reserves portion, which is cash, is funded from contributions to capital on both the tax and the rate side. And this makes up approximately 63.6% of the funding for capital. There's also development charge cash and debt to fund the growth projects. And in total, there is approximately $166.2 million of new debt authority that's required to fund the proposed 2021 capital program. Can move to the next slide, please. So this slide shows the percentage of the capital program used for renewal growth and regulatory or service enhancement initiatives for tax and rate combined. And reflecting prior council decisions to maintain our assets in a good state of repair, 65.9% of the $781 million is used for renewal, and 23.5% is for growth, and 10.7% is for regulatory and service enhancements. You can move to the next slide, please. So this slide provides a forecast of the 2021 year-end reserve balances. The management of reserves is an important factor in the city's overall financial condition as they impact both our financial sustainability and our financial flexibility. The credit agencies have acknowledged that the city's strong reserve levels and its relatively low level of debt as major attributes towards maintaining our high credit ratings. The operating reserve is generally used to stabilize or mitigate impacts of fluctuations in operating costs and revenues or to accumulate funds for future or contingent liabilities. And our capital reserves are used to fund capital works that are invested by the city for use until they're required. And they're invested, and thereby earning some interest as well. Restricted reserves are established by council when legislation requires funds to be received for that special purpose. And they have to be segregated and accounted for separately and can only be used for their prescribed purpose. These reserve balances include mitigation measures that were put in place in 2020, in particular, the capital close and the deferred capital amounts. And the savings from our discretionary and staffing pauses will only be recognized after confirming our financial results for 2020. And should there be any surpluses, they will be returned back to our operating reserves as part of our year-end disposition report. The rate reserves also include our capital close and deferred capital projects, those funds that were returned to source. And these funds could be borrowed by transit if required in 2021 as a mitigating measure. In terms of the reserve opening balances on the slide, you'll see that approximately $6.7 or $32 million can generally be used to stabilize or mitigate impacts of the fluctuations in our operating costs and revenues. And the remainder reserved, they're restricted, reserved to fund our various capital programs. So based on our current forecasts and input from our draft 2021 operating and capital budget, our operating reserve funds are projected to increase just slightly, and our capital reserves are projected to decrease, reflecting our increased investment in infrastructure. You can move to the next slide, please. Committee, board, and commission budget meetings are scheduled throughout November and December, and council will meet on December 9 to consider the draft budget and any recommendations stemming from the budget meetings. And at that point, the budget will be adopted. In conclusion, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer my sincere thanks to council, to senior leadership and staff that have supported this budget process, and in particular, the finance staff for their hard work and dedication throughout the year, and most particularly at budget time. C'est la fin de ma présentation, Monsieur le Maire. It's the end of my presentation. Thank you very much. Merci.
Great. Thank you very much, Madam Treasurer and CFO, and Steve Kanalakis. As I mentioned, we'll hold off questions to you, and the city manager will go through all of our outside agencies, starting with the committee of adjustment. There's no presentation, so this is received and tabled on the committee of adjustment draft budget. Received and tabled. Crime Prevention Ottawa, the same situation, no presentation, received and tabled. Ottawa Police Services Board, Chair Deans, if you and Chief Slowly and CAO Jeff Laterno are ready, we will hand the floor to you for the 2021 draft operating budget for the police. La bouche de budget pour le service de police pour 21. Madame Deans.
Just one second, Mr. Mayor. Of course, I've got the wrong one open. Just one second. Having a little technical trouble.
Okay.
Oh, boy. Okay. Sorry, I opened the wrong file, and now I don't know how to get it off my screen.
Is it the same chart that I have here? This is the first page.
Just hold on a second. Okay, I got it. Thank you. The Ottawa Police Services Board has spoken openly about the need to bring meaningful change to the Ottawa Police Service. And I believe that the 2021 draft operating and capital budget shows a commitment to that work. We have worked hard to develop a budget that answers the calls of the community and that will help deliver the board's strategic priorities for the Ottawa Police Service. As you will see, the budget includes investments in mental health response strategy and keeping with the community's desire for change, in neighborhood policing, in outreach recruitment and hiring, in addressing violence against women, in training and development, equity, diversity, and inclusion, and member health and wellness. I also want to take this opportunity to remind my colleagues of their opportunity to come out and speak to the OPS budget deliberations. You're invited to both the November 9 FAC meeting and the November 23 full board meeting. And we'll have an opportunity to ask your questions to both the OPS and to the OPSB. As you take time to review the draft budget, I want you to recognize that by advancing our work in the areas I previously mentioned, we will ultimately grow a service that best reflects the needs of our city. And we are very committed to doing that. With that said, I'll now turn the presentation over to Chief Slowly.
Thank you very much, Chair Deans and Mayor, Council, and my colleagues on the staff. Just to echo what Chair Deans has said, this is a budget that has been well-developed with a lot of input from our community members, our board, our own service members. It complies fully with the city and the board's rules. It is within the budget envelope that was provided to us. It aligns with Chair Deans' vision for a multi-year change budget. And it aligns with the board's vision and priorities, as well articulated around advancing the modernization of the service, advancing equity, diversity, and inclusion within the service and in our service delivery to the citizens, to advance the community policing model, and last but not least, to improve the health and wellness of our members so that they can go out in turn and provide the best level of service to the people of Ottawa. This is not a business-as-usual budget. It is a business-as-better budget, where we will make strategic investments in the priorities as articulated by the community and our own members. And they'll have a positive impact on the overall community safety and well-being. Next slide, please. And sorry, if you could advance one more. Thank you. It's a graphic that represents the changing nature of the city, of society, and of course, on the Ottawa Police Service itself. I'll take you clockwise around the graphics here. These are changes that are ongoing, probably most dramatic in terms of rate of change, nature of change in the last 10 years, certainly in the last five years. And as we've seen, events literally still unfolding from south of the border in terms of the US elections. I'll refer to that sort of butterfly effect throughout the course of this slide. When it comes to demographic, technology, and societal changes, as examples, the diversity in Ottawa has changed substantially over the last two decades, even more so over the last decade. The physical makeup, the demographic makeup of the city has changed a lot. Its institutions are still catching up to it. In terms of technology changes, just the last five years alone in terms of the impact of social media, I would suggest mostly negative, unfortunately, in terms of its effect on polarization, disinformation. The monetization through criminal elements using online means has significantly increased. The application of technology in the realm of security and justice, particularly as it relates to AI and its many different applications, in some cases have been very productive and constructive, in other cases, less certainness to the effective outcomes, the ethics of it, as well as we have some clear cases where we have an overarching on charter rights, privacy rights, human rights. And we only need to look at the broader societal trends, particularly as we've seen in this fiscal year 2020, the impact of climate change, the impact of a global pandemic, the impact on the global economic turndown as a result of the pandemic, and a variety of social trends that include Black Lives Matter, I Don't Know More, Me Too, all still very active, all very engaging, and all very impactful. When it comes to trends in crime, disorder, and public safety, we have the ongoing challenges of managing natural disasters in the nation's capital. We tend to forget about the opioid crisis, which is still with us, and the impact of fentanyl in all of our communities, regardless of your socioeconomic background. COVID has overshadowed that, but it's actually impacted and exacerbated those issues. They still remain with us. And there was a very excellent story today in the mainstream media around our frontline officers are increasingly using naloxone to save lives of people who are suffering from crises, in some cases, potential fatal crises involving fentanyl and the opioids. We have the ongoing issues of street level violence and increasing issues of violence happening behind closed doors as a result of COVID. And there's certainly been a healthy discourse in the city around the issue of mental health and addictions, the role police should play, and the role that broader society can and must play going forward. There's been major legislative changes and legal trends happening in the last year. We have the new Comprehensive Police Services Act, which brings with it the legislative requirement for every municipality to design and implement a community safety and well-being plan. It's been referenced already in earlier comments, and I will just continue to make that a focus of our own budget going forward. I think there's a huge opportunity to improve community safety and well-being through that legislation, to provide a more integrated and strategic and sustainable approach to service delivery within the city through that legislation, and potentially to look at increases in efficiency, including the opportunities to reconsider financial investments going forward once we've made several years of progress in that area. And of course, other legislation coming in from the federal government as it relates to the ongoing cannabis legislation and learning from what's taking place there going forward. The next area is scope expansion and budget pressures. The city is growing by way of population. We are seeing growth in the suburban areas that are taxing all city agencies to deliver services that have been mostly clustered in the centre, and now need to have greater levels of accessibility out into the suburban and rural areas. We've spoken at length about the COVID impacts in year and in next year. And of course, this is the national capital region. It's a very complex security and justice environment with multiple agencies operating. We know there's been a trend recently for the RCMP to move its resources into other priority areas for the national police service, and that's left, in some cases, gaps and in other cases, overlaps. But we are the police of jurisdiction here in the national capital region, and increasingly there are more demands being placed on us to provide a broader array of services beyond just municipal policing, and we're trying to manage that as best we can. And finally, the area of community perceptions and expectations. There is an exponential set of demands being placed on policing. That's been the case for several decades, and more recently, as we move into the online world, where cybercrime, online frauds, targeting of our youth and vulnerable on a variety of platforms, particularly since COVID, there are unrealistic expectations, in some cases fueled by what I call the Hollywood Effect of being able to wrap up the most complicated cases within a 45-minute timeline with commercial breaks attributed. This is simply not the case. We can't make institutional change overnight. We can't correct challenges in service delivery with simple solutions. And then, of course, last but not least, there is that butterfly effect that things that happen in other countries, in other parts of the world, have direct, almost immediate impact locally, and our ability to anticipate how those impacts will occur and move resources in near real time to address that and convince the community that we are aware of it and are addressing it appropriately, and engage that community in the solutions. There is a big gap between perceptions, expectations, and the actual operational institutional ability to deliver on that. All of this means that there are increasing costs and increasing complexity for policing, the broader justice sector, and specifically for community safety and wellbeing here in the nation's capital. Underpinning all of this is the issue of police legitimacy and public trust in policing. I would suggest legitimacy for all institutions, trust in all institutions, has been wavering for some period of time, for a wide variety of reasons. The police are the most visible aspect of a functioning democracy, in terms of the uniforms, in terms of the visible patrol that is part of our core policing, in terms of the news cycle, which inevitably has anywhere between 25% to 35% of the average news cycle focusing on local policing and broader safety and security issues. We're an incredibly visible element, and so the issue of legitimacy and trust tends to focus first and most on us, and we accept that in terms of accountability, responsibility, and quite frankly, opportunity. But at the heart of everything that we will do in this budget, and everything that we will do in delivering services based on the resources of this budget, will be to build, in some cases, rebuild legitimacy and trust. Next slide, please. I'll use the analogy of we're overhauling this plane while we're still flying it. We need to be able to continue to deliver on core police services on a 24/7, 365-day basis across Canada's largest municipal government. It's a geography that includes urban, suburban, and rural, a large green belt, and of course, is the national capital region, which applies greater complexity to the core policing that is required by our frontline men and women, which includes very brave and courageous civilian members who provide direct contact with our community. Core service, as described by the Police Services Act, crime prevention, public order, emergency response, assistance to victims, law enforcement and assistance in the prosecutions of those brought before the courts. This is the core policing mandate, as required on the Police Services Act. Nothing could slow us down, not COVID, not the butterfly effect of other issues happening around the world with local impact, not the loss of revenue in the middle of the fiscal year. Our men and women came to work every single day and continue to deliver on those core police services while supporting Ottawa Public Health and other agencies with the other challenges that have faced us here locally and globally. In the midst of that, we focused on improving road safety. As we saw the very early impacts of COVID, we're in the area of traffic management, traffic safety, and the behaviour of people on our roadways. Violent crime continued, and although we had great success on the streets, we had great challenges behind doors that were closed, particularly family homes, where we saw a greater impact of mental health, addictions, child abuse, domestic abuse, and underreporting of sexual abuse as a result of the impacts for COVID. The calls for service, although muted in the first part of the year, have reached back to normal year levels and have had the additional complexity of the COVID effect and the other effects coming from global trends that I referenced earlier on. I want to again restate, this is not just a normal municipal police agency, this is the police of jurisdiction for the national capital region. There are responsibilities well beyond municipal police services that we are required to participate in and often lead, and increasingly, resource, as other federal agencies have withdrawn as a result of other priorities, we've had to fill that gap with very little in terms of a renegotiated contract and resources from the federal government. These are all areas that we are working on continuously as we overhaul the plane while it's still flying in the sky. Next slide, please. A lot of different terms on this slide, but these represents the buckets of new investments that the 2021 budget will bring to bear. It's been developed based on calls for change, both within the community and within our own police service by our own members, and focuses on materially advancing the board's strategic priorities so that there is a felt impact amongst the members of our service and the members of the community. In the area of neighbourhood policing, there will be an additional growth of 20 officers for our neighbourhood resource teams. This will expand on the investments that we made over the last two years. The original three neighbourhood resource teams in the central core, we doubled that number in 2020, and now we will build neighbourhood resource teams customized to our suburban and rural communities and to the variety of community safety and wellbeing issues that they're experiencing within those geographies and within their specific demographies in those areas. We will expand the number of crime prevention officers by five. We've heard exceedingly from our community members and from our councillors, the value of those crime prevention officers, and most recently, Seth LeMay in the Vanier Overbrook area has been recognized for his contributions in crime prevention, community building, and supporting local community initiatives at the Crime Prevention Ottawa Awards, and that's an example of the type of value those individuals can bring. Last but not least, we'll be doing a full review of our school resource officer program, and we'll be working in coordination with the local school boards to conduct that review and to make changes in that service delivery going forward, all under the executive sponsorship of Deputy Chief Steve Bell. There's been great discussion around mental health services. We've committed $1.5 million in this fiscal year coming up 2021 to the co-development of a mental health response strategy with community partners, specifically led by our public health, mental health, subject matter experts, academics, and demographic stakeholders. We will be a supporting role in there, but we bring material resources to the table so that whatever the final plan is, that we have "skin in the game" to make sure that we're able to adequately fund our portion of the responsibilities and provide the best resources to achieve the best success coming out of that strategy. When it comes to recruiting and hiring, we've made major changes over the last year to improve our recruiting and hiring processes. This has resulted in this year having a 400% increase in the number, quality, and diversity of our applicants pool. Of the 96 officers that we've hired, 33% are women, 35% are from racialized communities, 3% self-identify as Indigenous. These recruits are highly educated, they speak multiple languages, they have employment and volunteer experience in a wide variety of areas, including youth services, community housing, mental health services, and victim services. Next, we're making specific investments in the area of violence against women. Five of our growth officer positions will go into our sexual assault and partner assault unit. There will be a specific coordinator dedicated to violence against women, and a dedicated coordinator for missing murdered Indigenous women and girls. These are major increases in the area of violence against women, and the coordinator positions, particularly for VAW and missing and murdered Indigenous women and girls, we've heard repeatedly from our community, and we're putting our money where our mouth is now, instead of just saying it's a priority, we're funding it and staffing it as such. In the area of training and development, we will be increasing our training in the area specifically of anti-black and anti-Indigenous racism, in de-escalation training, as well as an overall efficacy review of the quality of our training within the police service to make sure that we're getting the intended changes in thinking, behaviour, output, and outcome. The organization has gone through a major reorganization in my first year in office. This has impacted over 60% of the organization. There's been underdevelopment and implementation over the last 12 months. Our key highlights and goals include a greater focus on and alignment with our neighbourhood policing strategy, and in specifically supporting the city's community safety and wellbeing plan to better address the underlying causes of crime and social disorder. Secondly, to overhaul our intelligence-led policing strategy, to focus as much as we do on crime, as well as on reducing social disorder and improving traffic safety, a much more balanced and holistic approach to community safety and wellbeing, moving away from the traditional approach that policing has had on crime, and expanding that and integrating it with the city's efforts around community safety and wellbeing. Last but not least, an investment, increasing investment on our members' mental health and wellness to allow them to be their best selves, to show up at work and be in the best position possible to be able to serve, protect, and demonstrate respect for the million people that call the nation's capital home. This will include four additional FTEs, full-time equivalents, reallocated to our member health and wellness programs, and an overall annual budget increase of $5 million to support our members. That's a quick overview of the key investments identified in the 2021 budget. At this point, I'll transition over to our Chief Administration Officer, Jeff Laterno, for a deeper dive into the numbers. Thank you.
If we can move to the next slide, please. Thank you, Chief. So this table highlights the breakdown of the $13.2 million draft operating budget increase. Maintaining existing service levels creates an incremental requirement of $11.3 million. Staffing costs make up the majority of this increase and include a provision for negotiated pay increases. Other drivers in this line are inflationary increases and contributions to capital. Also included in this category is the red light camera funding. The 30 officer growth plan creates a $3.9 million requirement and is a key budget priority, investing in neighbourhood policing and addressing violence against women. Included in this line item is the compensation cost of the growth officers as they are hired over the course of the year, along with the cost of uniforms, equipment, vehicles, and training. Also included is the annualized compensation costs of growth officers hired in 2020. $800,000 is being allocated towards new services, previously outlined by the chief, which include the mental health response strategy, third-party intake and investigations for workplace sexual violence and harassment, along with additional training for our members in the areas of mental health, de-escalation, and anti-black, anti-Indigenous racism. OPS continues to be committed to seeking ways to reduce operating costs while maintaining core services. The 2021 budget includes $2.7 million of additional efficiencies, bringing the total annualized efficiencies to $20 million since 2012. The user fee increase aligns to the board's user fee policy and ensures that user fees grow at the same pace as costs. This breaks down the $13.2 million cost increases, and at the bottom of the slide, you can see the funding assessment growth at 1.5%, and the police tax rate increase at 3%. Next slide, please. This table highlights the 2021 capital envelope to ensure that assets such as fleet facilities and information technology are replaced as required, and to ensure the adequate delivery of policing services. For 2021, the capital budget request is $24.1 million and is allocated based on three categories: renewal of assets such as fleet, facilities, information technology, and life cycling of specialized assets; growth requirements for the South facility for our comm center and IT-related infrastructure; and finally, strategic initiatives such reflect investments towards our neighbourhood resource team facilities, our Swansea expansion of space, and growth costs for lockers, mobile in-car workstations, vehicles and equipment to support the 30 officer growth for 2021. The 2021 capital budget will be funded almost entirely from pay-as-you-go funding. This concludes our presentation. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thank you very much, Jeff, and Chief, and Diane. We now have, this is, again, a reminder, these are very technical procedural questions only, otherwise, we're going to rule them out of order. So Counselor Alshon Tiri, please.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Chief and Jeff, for your presentation. Jeff, you mentioned there would be efficiency of $2.7 million. Can you tell me how you plan?
Yeah, that's right, Counselor, as you know, as a former chair, that's right in the weeds, so you can save that for committee. These are on procedural questions?
Monsieur Mayor, where would we know detail about this item? Is that going to be in the police budget so we can attend and ask those questions?
Yeah, that'll be in the big document, which should be emailed to you sometime today, if I'm not mistaken, Deputy Clerk? Okay. So it should be emailed to every member of council, so thank you. Counselor Menard, procedure?
I can wait till the end for full questions, if that's what you want. Mayor, I just, I had a question on the police budget.
Well, this is the time, but it's only on procedural matters, not on the substance of the budget. So do you have anything on it from a technical point of view?
No, it's just what we endorsed at the last council meeting, and I was wondering where that fell in and the amount there.
Yeah, so that would come up at the police board. Okay, thank you very much to police, and Counselor Deans, and Chief Slowly, and CAO Jeff Laterno. We really appreciate your cooperative approach working with our city staff. So, received and tabled. Next is Ottawa Public Library, Le Bibliothèque Publique d'Ataua pour le budget 21. We have Counselor Matt Luloff as the Chair, followed by a presentation by CEO Danielle McDonald. And thank you to the library board, I guess you met, was it last night or the night before? And lots of branches opening up again, we're very happy about that. My old branch on Sunnyside that I used to go and read the newspapers in, it's opening up soon. So we appreciate the gradual reopening of all the branches, and we'll send the Chair, we'll send the floor over to the Chair, Mr. Counselor Luloff, please. If you're on mute. Counselor Luloff? Might be frozen. We'll just wait for a moment, if Counselor Luloff can hear us.
I can, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, there we go, so you can start. That's a nice backdrop you have there.
It is indeed.
Mister Mayor, councillors, welcome.
As Chair of the Ottawa Public Library Board, I'm pleased to be accompanied by our incredible CEO Danielle McDonald to table Ottawa Public Library's draft 2021 budget.
2020's been a tough year. The library has been able to adapt to the quickly changing circumstances that this pandemic has brought about. The efforts taken, or the action taken over the past few months to continue to provide safe library services in an effective manner have been remarkable. Despite the challenges, the board, these other staff have stepped up to the plate to meet the needs of our customers, and we've learnt a lot about the importance of what we do and about the way we do it.
Towards achieving our strategic plans. We have continued to advance the Ottawa Public Library and Library and Archives joint facility project, working towards a finalized design. And with your help, in 2021, we can make a significant step toward the removal of barriers to library services in our city. Next slide, please. The proposed 2021 budget is a responsible fiscal approach that supports the fundamental requirements for effective public library services in our city. Delivery of effective services requires care, understanding, innovation, and the participation of as many people as possible in the process of learning and the promotion of literacy of all kinds.
L'apprentissage, learning, and literacy are our main objectives here. We're doing that based on physical and virtual installations which allow the community to participate. At the end of the day, we're there to serve the community, but there are obstacles, however, barriers, and we believe that what we're putting forward today in the draft budget 2021 will in fact give us the wherewithal to actually meet those needs.
Existing facilities by replacing core building systems in multiple branches, providing the necessary planning for growth in the future, increase investment in virtual services to continue with innovative service delivery and design of virtual programming and products, expand our e-content with the understanding that many Ottawa residents have a newfound appreciation for services that are accessible from home. appreciation for services that are accessible from home and more importantly, remove a significant barrier to ensure OPL services are equally and equitably provided for all persons in the city of Ottawa. Turn it over to our CEO.
Thank you, Chair Luloff. Thank you, Mr Mayor and members of council. An overview of our budget shows that the board has kept within the directed increase from council and that's $2.13 million. And this will increase the total library budget from $54.3 million in 2021. And additionally, there will be significant investments by our city partners in the maintenance or replacement of core building systems at a number of our branches. If approved, the total library budget, including the investment in lifecycle and accessibility projects, will be just over $56 million. The next slide, please. The draft budget covers all the mandatory pressures that we faced in 2021 or that we will face in 2021, and these include cost of living adjustments and licensing and maintenance increases. And you'll see that the remaining pieces are going towards strategic at a rate of 58%. The majority of our funding, as I mentioned, is aimed towards advancing our strategic goals and initiatives that support our services in this changing pandemic environment and help us in living our values and the importance of inclusion by reducing barriers to library services. The next slide, please. This slide highlights for you the 2021 budget key items, and the first you'll see is the materials recovery model at just over $1 million with an offset of one FTE.
So the board has adopted a documented recovery model which will eliminate costs and which will allow us to benefit from new services. The adoption of this model and the elimination of fees will get rid of one obstacle or one barrier for all clients. We think that this will lead to more people holding library cards. An increase in circulation will also foster access to information, better access for clients living in poverty such as families with kids, the elderly, new arrivals to Canada is important.
Put $410,000 towards concerns our virtual services and this funding will be used to develop and deliver enhanced virtual services and programmes. These systems and services will enable additional accessibility to library customers in response to the increasing demand for services that do not require physical presence at a library branch. Programming and related development tools and professional services are among the anticipated expenditures for this funding. For example, enabling our virtual board meetings, online tutoring, as well as increased electronic materials or ebooks. And the last component on this slide speaks to our materials handling system and we're looking at $300,000 towards this strategic initiative. This is the equipment that the library services use to sort the library books and other physical materials, and this was installed originally in 2010. At a rate of more than 4 million items per year, this system would ordinarily need to be replaced. In 2021, instead of replacement, the sorting system will be refurbished at a cost of $300,000 and will effectively reset its lifespan so that we can have another seven to 10 years of reliable service. This represents a savings of over $1.45 million when compared to replacement costs. Next slide, please. On the capital side, including OPL's portion of growth projects and city funding, staff recommend a total capital programme of just over $4 million, and that you can see is combining the $1.4 million OPL column along with the $2.691 column, other funding. For 2021, the majority of OPL-directed spending in the capital programme is for the following facilities: $800,000 for branch-related improvements across the system, and just to remind you, we have 33 branches to expand that over; $500,000 for funding to continue planning for library services located in the east urban area of the city; and $200,000 to explore services in the Carlington community. Additionally, a funding from the city will be used to complete a number of large lifecycle projects slated for Carlingwood, Cumberland, Manetick, Orleans and Sunnyside branches. I will now turn this over to the chair. Thank you.
Next slide, please. Mister Mayor and colleagues, the OPL draft budget not only fulfils OPL's mandatory requirements and maintains our current operations, but it also removes economic barriers to library services, and this is something for which we can all be proud. I'd like to thank Anna Basile, Matthew Pritz and the entire senior leadership team for their hard work on this. Our staff at all levels are second to none. Their dedication and commitment is felt by our customers and yourselves, and they deserve our thanks. The CEO and I are happy to take your questions, and on behalf of our board, we thank you sincerely for your ongoing and enthusiastic support for our public library.
Great, thank you very much. Anything on process or technical nature to the chair or CEO of the Ottawa Public Library? See no hands, so received and tabled. And thank you very much, Chair Luloff and CEO Danielle McDonald, for a very good succinct presentation. Next is Ottawa Public Health Conseil de Santé d'Atauat, Chair Egli and Dr Etches. You now have the floor, please.
Thank you very much, Mister Mayor, and thank you for the opportunity to present our budget, which we tabled just the other night at our board meeting. If I could have someone move it to slide number two, please. We are presenting a balanced budget of $98.1 million, which is broken down between $74.1 million of base funding and $24 million of one-time funded requests. It incorporates an inflationary growth base increase of $1.16 million from the city of Ottawa, assumes a 0% provincial base increase in the Ministry of Health, assumes all one-time requirements will be required for the entire year and are provincially funded at 100%. And lastly, does not include provisions for activities related to providing a COVID-19 vaccine to the public. Such big budget impacts are currently unknown. A full costing and description of the required activities to administer a new vaccine will be provided to the board of health once the provincial immunisation plans are made known. Slide number three, please. Funding for public health services consists of several categories. Cost-shared funds are used to deliver programmes to adhere to the Ontario Public Health standards as they relate to the Health Protection and Promotion Act, and they represent the majority of the OPH budget. Since the pandemic began in March of 2020, OPH has had to divert approximately 80% of its staff away from what was planned at the beginning of the year to support the COVID-19 response. The Chief Medical Officer of Health directed all health units to take all necessary measures to respond to COVID-19 while continuing to maintain critical public health programmes and services identified in their pandemic plans. OPH has done this and continues to monitor and adjust resources as required. Recently, OPH took action to reinstate critical services in infectious disease, healthy growth and development, mental health and substance use, dental treatment and immunisation services to lower levels of risk for the priority populations. The next largest envelope is 100% provincially funded programmes, which include healthy babies, healthy children, the Ontario seniors dental care programme, indigenous health and harm reduction. Resources in this area as well have been redeployed for the response with the support of the province. The last category, which is 100% city-funded, includes adult dental expenses, which are mostly covered, or recovered rather, from the community and social services and other programmes such as mental health, substance use and injury prevention and school-based outreach. Slide number four, please. This next slide lists programmes that were required to be augmented over and above the base cost shared and 100% funded programmes in 2020 and requires to be continued for 2021 in order to respond to the pandemic. Areas include case and contact management, which meets ministry and federal guidelines to follow up with residents to test positive for COVID-19 and their close contacts within specified timelines and compile and submit reports to Public Health Ontario. School support, which work with local school boards to implement provincial standards and guidance. Areas of focus include providing infection prevention and control advice, supporting testing and surveillance, delivering mental wellness support and facilitating knowledge exchange with stakeholders and the school community. Infection prevention and control, which monitors and responds to any resident or healthcare worker that tests positive for COVID-19 in institutions such as long-term care facilities, childcare facilities and congregate settings. Communications, community engagement and operations, which manage all communications with various external and internal stakeholders as well as provide support to community partners with information, resources and guidance. Messaging to all stakeholders must be continuously adapted as the pandemic requirements and response changes. Cultural adaptation is also a priority, which includes work with community leaders and organisations who can help build supports for populations at higher risk of harms from COVID-19 and other challenges to health. Surveillance and medical support, which analyse, interpret COVID information outbreaks, clusters and societal impacts data, provide ongoing reporting and technical guidance for case and outbreak investigations, specific settings and practices. Emergency response phone line, which responds to all COVID-related calls and emails in the general public, schools, childcare centres, workplaces and healthcare providers. And finally, logistics, information technology, finance and staffing support, which provides support services to the organisation as a whole, such as new digital application solutions, hardware support, procurement, asset tracking, staff scheduling, et cetera. Next slide, please. This next slide provides high-level summary of the 2021 budget expenditure changes. In order to maintain existing services, the budget includes a provision of $1.14 million for the future negotiation of collective agreements and $20,000 for inflationary facility costs. These base pressures are funded fully by the city of Ottawa. Next is a list of one-time pressures for areas that I referenced in the previous slide, and they amount to $22.5 million. As stated earlier, it is assumed that these specific pressures will be provincially funded at 100%. Next slide, please. Slide six provides a high-level overview of the 2021 budget revenue changes. Of note, and with respect to COVID, the province has confirmed funding for 45 school nurses to the end of July. The $1.5 million indicated represents the adjustment required to bring the funding amount up to the 2021 approval. All remaining COVID funding is expected to be announced in 2021. In total, the combined budget increase from base amounts to $2.7 million. Next slide. In summary, we are presenting a budget that includes provisions to maintain the base, considers the latest information when forecasting COVID needs and assumes that we will be responding to the pandemic for the duration of 2021. We welcome any questions at this time.
Thank you, councillors. Dr Etches, have any comments or are you speaking for the board?
No, I don't need to add anything, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so again councillor Brockington, only on a technical nature, you have your hand up?
Yes, Mayor, thank you, and thank you to Chair Egli for the overview. I'd like to submit questions before the OPH board meeting. Where do we send questions to?
That's a great technical question, thank you.
It is a very technical question, and I believe the answer is to our board secretary, but I'm going to look to Dr Etches to confirm that.
Yes, that's correct.
And who is that?
I'll put the contact information in the chat or we can circulate that to all of council to clarify.
We'll circulate that councillor, it's Deanne Blay, but we'll circulate that with the contact information.
Thanks very much.
Great, thank you. So thank you Chair Egli and Dr Etches, and we will receive and table the board of health recommendations.
Received.
Received and table. Okay, thank you. We'll now go back to technical questions on the budget as a whole to the city manager and the CFO. Any councillor El Shantiri of technical nature?
I hope it's technical enough for you, Mister Mayor. Wendy, you didn't tell us about the endowment fund. Where is it in the budget? Is it from the Hydra One?
Councillor, the endowment fund is in the non-departmental area of the budget and the budget assumes that that will continue throughout 2021. I'm happy to point it out to you if you wish as an aside later.
That's good, I just want, now about the unfunded liability for our organisation, are we still contributing to it what we normally do or are we be able to contribute what we normally do?
I'll ask Isabel just to step in, but my understanding is there's no change in any of those things.
Okay, I can check with you later on, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Fleury, please.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I have two technical questions. The first one to Wendy, can you clarify that when we're going to see the budget in December following all the committee, that we'll get also an outlook of the deficit situation that we face within the 2020 window? Because I think you're predicting what you know today and rely on yours and the mayor's interest in pursuing the phase two funding, but I'm not sure, I guess I can take that offline specifically, but can we be informed throughout the process of what is our current deficit projection for 2020?
So there's two pieces to that councillor. There is an update in the budget document with respect to our quarter three status, you will see that as part of the tabling and the documents that you receive in the budget. And then we will bring a final disposition for 2020 to council in the new year, and that will show you exactly where we land. And I am happy to provide an update when we receive results from our application for the safe restart. So once we get confirmation from the province what our allocation will be, I will prepare a memo to council to let them know.
Great, thank you.
And in the final one on technical nature, there's a reference to a funding stream for police through red light cameras, and I just want to clarify if that is a direction or if that's approved and which committee cannot be debated at?
I'm happy to dig that up for you councillor. I believe it was a previous year direction from council and I can get you the details on that and the committee.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, merci. Okay, so on the preliminary operating and capital budget, tabled and received? Tabled and received, thank you. Thank you all for your good work on the part of our staff and members of council for your input, and now the heavy lifting begins with your reaching out to members of the community through your committee system. So we have a couple of other reports that we have to accept. First is the fleet vehicle and equipment plans supplemental to the budget estimates. Received and tabled. Councillor Fleury, you still have your hand up. Do you want to speak to the fleet vehicle? Nope, okay, thank you. Next is the FTE analysis. I think I'd just like to offer perhaps if staff can just give us a quick rundown, because often people say, well, you know, there's too much staff at the city of Ottawa. Maybe you can just tell us exactly the number of staff. We have fewer, I believe. My understanding is there's nine fewer staff on the payroll when you don't include the paramedics, is that correct?
That's correct, Mister Mayor.
So it's a 21 person or 21 FTE increase overall, but if you take out the paramedics, which we receive funding in part from the province, we've actually seen staff contingency reduced by nine people.
If I may, Mister Mayor, it's if you take the police out of the equation, it's a reduction of nine overall, yes, thank you.
It's the police, not the paramedics, that's right, okay. So table and receive the, or rather, receive the FTE analysis? Received. Transportation Committee report number 12. Transportation Committee Report Number 12, Rapport numéro 12 du Comité de Transports, Support for Winter Outdoor Dining and Outdoor Retail. Counselor Tierney, the Chair of the Committee, worked very hard on this initiative along with other members of committee, and I'd ask him to say a few words. Counselor Tierney, please. Thank you for for doing this. We're going to have, I think, great weather this week for patios, which is a nice change from two days ago.
And and thank you very much, Mister Mayor. And that's why we felt rather than waiting for the regularly regular scheduled council that we had to bring it forward here today. I know many members of council are very supportive of our local businesses. And we have a long day, so that's all I'll say on this one, Mister Mayor.
Great, thank you. So on the recommendations from Transportation Committee, carried, adoptee, thank you. And the second item that Counselor Tierney is very involved with. Oh, I'm sorry, I should also thank Counselor Kits. I know that I believe she was also involved in the winter outdoor dining initiative. Adult crossing guards, this is some good news for various communities in Ottawa. And Counselor Tierney, again, that's your committee that did that good work. If you'd like to comment on that, please.
Yes, very briefly, Mister Mayor. Obviously, during COVID times, children's safety at schools is very critical. Counselor Dudas did move the motion at Transportation. And again, rather than waiting for the regular scheduled council meeting, I've been working with staff. They want to get this message out there and do the extra hiring right away rather than waiting additional couple of weeks for our next council meeting. So thank you very much, Mister Mayor.
Thank you, sorry, I neglected Counselor Kits' hand was up. I'm not sure if it was on the 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 patios or the crossing guards. Counselor Kits, if you'd like to offer a comment?
No, that's fine. Thank you, Mister Mayor. Counselor Tierney did a great job, so I'm good on that point. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So on the adult crossing guards, Motion Brigadier Scholar Adult, carried?
Carried.
Thank you. Counselor Egli, motion to introduce reports, Motion pour Temple Adoption de Rapports, signed by Counselor Deans, please.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Just I'm muting myself. The report from the Director of Fleet Services entitled 2021 Fleet Vehicle and Equipment Plans, Information Supplemental to the Budget Estimates, the report from the Director of Human Resources entitled F T E Analysis Report, Information Supplemental to the Budget Estimates, and Transportation Committee Report 12 be received and adopted as amended.
Adoptee, carried? Notice of intent, Avise d'Intention, Notice of Intent from the Auditor General to submit the annual report at the Audit Committee Meeting on November 24, 2020. Notice of intent from the Integrity Commissioner to submit a report to council on an inquiry respecting the conduct of Counselor Shirelli at the City Council Meeting of November 25, 2020. Counselor Egli, confirmation bylaw, please.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. That the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings at the council meeting of November 4, 2020.
The motion carried, adoptee. Counselor Egli, adjournment, please.
That the proceedings of the City Council meeting November 4, 2020 be...